Want to welcome you all here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from getting started. But I think if you'll stand and join me, we'll lead in the Pledge of Allegiance and then Colby Fulfer will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day and for all your many blessings. And, Lord, we thank you for this wonderful city that we call home. And, Lord, you have just bestowed your blessings upon us as a city, and I thank you for the leadership that you've placed over this city. And, Father, I pray for wisdom over these next few moments as we make decisions that we would do what's best for the people. And, Lord, I pray that you would be over this meeting over the next few moments in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Kobe. All right. A call to order this regular meeting of Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, February 27, 2018. I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Rick Culver.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Colby Fulfer.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rick Evans.
Here.
Jim Reed. Kathy J. Cox. Ernest Kate.
All right. Thank you. We do have large print agendas available over here. Chad, do you have those over there by you? Okay. In case anyone needs one. We're going to start off tonight, as we normally do, with comments from our citizens. If we have citizens that would like to address the council, this is a portion of the meeting we set aside each meeting to hear brief comments. We would invite you to come and come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address. Please keep your comments brief and understand that whatever you have to say won't be acted upon tonight. So if there is anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come at this time. Is that on?
Nope.
Doesn't sound like it.
Okay. Try it again.
There we go. Oh, I don't have to yell now. Well, good evening, everybody, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and good evening to all of you. I wanted to let you know I'm Megan Godfrey. I live at 500 Janet Street here in Springdale, and I am running for Arkansas House of Representatives in District 89. Just wanted to announce my candidacy and let you know that I'm looking forward to running a campaign that elevates the diverse voices of this community. And I'm for families, for fairness, and for the future. Thank you for the opportunity.
Megan, thank you. Thank you. Somebody else?
I'm Howard Griffin. Been living in Springdale since 1961. I've seen some of this growth you're talking about. But the reason we're here is, I know on a recent election we had, we did approve the funds, and a dog and cat habitat was approved. And we're here to tell you, we do not want it in our backyard, and that's on Hunt Park. Put it somewhere other than Hunt Park. I mean, that's right in the center of a residential area. And I tell you, guys, if we do that, we've got our priorities mixed up. You hear these things on TV. Give $19 for an orphaned child. Give $19 for an injured veteran. And give $19 for a dog. We've got our priorities messed up. If we stick a dog pound right in the middle of a residential area, the nice park like Hunt Park, we need your help.
Thank you, Howard. Anybody else?
This is out of my comfort zone, but I am Mary Doitt. I live on 2260 Cheyenne Trail. Pump Station Road runs adjoining my property. Right across the road is JB Hunt Park. Where the animal shelter is scheduled to go as proposed right now, it would literally be in my backyard. When you think about the noise factor, this is something that we would have to contend with every day of the year, day in, nighttime, and so on. So we feel to put an animal shelter in the midst of an established neighborhood would not be right. It is as if our rights and feelings are being ignored in favor of an animal shelter. So we're asking the council to please reconsider another location because putting an animal shelter in the midst of a residential area does not seem right.
Thank you, Mary. All right. Anyone else? All right. We'll move on to item five, Economic Development Report. I see Scott here.
Thank you, Mayor Sprouse. I've left each of you a copy of the Economic Development Report, which covers the fourth quarter of 2017 and the month of January for 2018. As you can see, we're having great interest in Springdale from outside companies. We have three out-of-state manufacturers that are looking for sites in Springdale. Numerous restaurants and retail development are looking not only downtown but in various parts of the city. As you'll see, I guess the highlight toward the end of the year was the opening of the Tyson Emma Avenue Complex, which has just been a huge, huge boon already to downtown, and we'll continue to see development due to that. Sales tax numbers are really doing well. I know the mayor probably will allude to that later in his address. For 2018, off to a great start, the February numbers, February 18 numbers represented a 10.78% increase over February of '17. So we're off to a great start in 2012. Our unemployment rate's still one of the lowest in the state at 2.6, well, under the state average of 3.6 on the unemployment data. As far as the Chamber initiatives, of course, many of you were involved with City Future Five, which was held in early December, which was a huge success and a lot of great ideas for the future of our city and the vision going forward were discussed. The Chamber is also working with our, continue works with our manufacturers and our educational entities to help provide a better idea, a better curriculum on preparing our students for jobs locally once they enter the workplace. The Chamber will hold the ACES Academy, its Academy for Career Educators in Springdale. That'll be coming up in June. And we're already full, the registration's already full. We'll have 40 educators from the Springdale School District that have a three-day opportunity together with leaders from the manufacturing and business side to learn more about what our business needs are. See, many openings that we had in the last few months, of course, with several restaurants, and then also, again, the Tyson Emma Avenue Complex, Waco Title, and then with today, Children's Hospitals. And as of today, they're up running full speed with an emergency room and inpatient services. So things are going well in Springdale. The rankings are still good. Recent 24/7 Wall Street ranking had Springdale the 45th-best city in the United States to live in. We're the only city in Arkansas that made the top 50. And then a Millican report that the metropolitan area was number 25 in their annual rankings, so.
Good news. Any questions for Scott?
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. As you see there on item seven, minutes will be produced at the next meeting. Before we go into the procedural motions, Ernest has a correction that we need to approve on the agenda.
Item 9D, Resolution approving a waiver of street improvements at 910 Crutcher has been removed from the agenda. Does not require council action because they posted payment in lieu of improvement. So if there's anyone here for that, that's not on the agenda.
That's 9D. Okay.
That's not... 9B?
D.
D.
D as in David.
I was going to say B's not what I'm reading here.
Do we need to take any action to take that off? No. Okay. All right. With that noted, we'll move on to item eight, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
Move for both A and B.
All right. Got a motion, a second for A and B. Roll call.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
Item nine, as Patsy makes her way, Planning Commission reporting recommendations. Patsy Christie, Director of Planning.
The first item is a rezoning request for about 1.83 acres located at 7746 West Miller Road. The request is to rezone the property from Plan Unit Development PUD to low-medium density, single-family residential district SF2 and declaring an emergency. This is kind of a unique little piece of property. The property to the south around the school was zoned PUD before the 412 bypass went in. And after the property was acquired for the right-of-way for the 412 bypass, it left this small sliver at the corner. The rest of the property to the north and east of this is already zoned SF2, and they're requesting to have it rezoned to SF2, and it will become part of a subdivision that we anticipate getting preliminary plat for that in the very near future. The title of the ordinance reads an Ordinance and meaning orders number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining there, too, by rezoning certain lands from Plan Unit Development PUD to low-medium density, single-family residential district SF2 and declaring an emergency.
Will the ordinance pass?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Anyone on this issue? Okay, Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Second.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Ordinance Merce Claus, carry 7-0.
The next item is a request for a use unit 28 as a conditional use for a home occupation in an SF2 low-medium density, single-family residential district for a operation where they will do internet business for garment printing, and everything will be handled. No one will come to the building. At 3968 Chevrolet Avenue, Planning Commission recommends approval of this conditional use request with the following conditions. No alteration of the outside appearance of the residential structure, provision of a separate outside entrance for the business areas of the residential structure, no outside storage of materials required for the operation of the business, operated only by the resident members of the household and shall not have any employees, concessionaires, or any other form of operator or helper whether such business is conducted on the premises or off the premises, requires the use of an area no greater than 30% of the total heated living space of the residential structure, generates no traffic, parking, and sewage or water use in excess of what is normal in the residential neighborhood, will not produce any fumes, odors, noise, or any other offensive effects that are not normal to residential activity, will not involve accessory buildings, and stock and trade shall not exceed 10% of the floor area of the accessory use. Title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a conditional use for Petra Hutzinger at 3968 Chevrolet Avenue as set forth in ordinance number 4030.
Will the resolution pass?
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Pass the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay. Denise?
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
The next item is a request for a conditional use for an auto sales at 3360 North Thompson. There has been auto sales and a muffler repair place at this location, but a conditional use is not transferable from one to another. So came in and asked for a new request for TJ Auto. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this conditional use. There were no conditions set for this other than there was some discussion about some frontage landscaping, and we're working with the owner to see if we can accomplish some of that frontage landscaping on there. Title of the resolution reads a resolution proving a condition use for TJ Auto at 3360 North Thompson is set forth in ordinance number 4030.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Pass the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? All right. Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
All right. Item 10, we had a committee of the whole that met last Monday. Would someone want to take that, or you want me to do it?
I think we let Mr. Lawson have that, didn't we?
Did you do that, Mike?
I believe I did.
You want to go ahead and take this?
I can. We've got one resolution, and it's authorizing the mayor and a city clerk to enter into a lease agreement with Feed Communities, Inc., on property owned by the city of Springdale. It was recommended for approval.
This is, for those of you who might not know, Feed Communities, Inc., this is a city-owned building near the Greenway downtown here that the city is not using right now, and it's a great location. It'll be a temporary location, but at least for the time being, it's a great location for Feed Communities to do their work of trying to have a location to store vegetables in conjunction, possibly with a farmer's market or other things, trying to further their work of making healthy food choices available to our community. So great deal, and I appreciate the committee forwarding that with a recommendation for approval. We have a motion and a second. Is there anyone that'd like to speak to this? Oh, we don't have a motion? I thought we had one. I'm sorry.
I did read it.
We've got one now.
Second.
And a second. All right. Anybody else? All right. Denise?
Evans. Reed.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Carry 7-0.
Thank you. Item 11, Street and Capital Improvement Committee reports and recommendations. Chairman's Rick Evans. Rick?
Last week, Street and CIP, we have one resolution due tonight that was recommended for approval, and it's a resolution appropriating funds for preliminary design for park improvements. Or, well, we've already designed them part of the parks.
And this would come out of, I think the recommendation was to come out of a
Parks.
Park fund. And there is some additional information attached that there were a couple of questions about the travel expenses that were being asked to be reimbursed, and that documentation is in your packet.
Mayor, you might mention which parks.
These are, thank you, Mike. This is Shaw Family Park, which will be our new park that will develop to the near legendary subdivision in the northwest, and also the work that has been done so far in preliminary design for improvements to Randall Tyson Sports Complex. So.
That's the two.
That's the two parks. And we've had preliminary design, we've had a public meeting already on the design, preliminary design of Shaw Family Park, and Melissa, at the end of the meeting, will talk about possible public meeting times for several things, but including the Randall Tyson Sports Complex. Okay?
Will the resolution pass?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? All right. Denise?
Reed.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Carry 7-0.
All right. Item 12, Finance Committee reports and recommendations. Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Finance Committee met last Monday night, and the three items on the agenda were all forwarded to the council with recommendation for approval. The first resolution, where is it? Sorry. Resolution authorizing the sale of property located at 5110 Daring Road to Renee Anderson. And, Mayor, I'll let you speak to that if you'd like to.
This is what's been classified as, I think it's an uneconomic remnant, is what that's called. And this was leftover from the construction of the Don Tyson Parkway Interchange, and the city's been maintaining it, to the best of my knowledge. And we have an adjoining property owner that's wanting to do a development, and that property, a portion of that property would be, the portion that's not in the Arkansas Highway Department, or RDOT, I'm sorry. They get upset with you if you call them Arkansas Highway Department anymore. With RDOT, anything that's not in, a piece of this property that's not in RDOT's right-of-way, they're asking to purchase from the city, and that's what this is about. It's a remnant that we can't do anything with. It's really a great deal for the city, and it will help their development moving forward. So did we get a, you read it, Jeff?
Resolution's passed.
And now we have a motion and a second to pass. Are there any other questions or comments about this? All right. Denise?
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson. Evans.
Ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
Second resolution is a resolution of intent regarding the bond improvements, improvement projects. And that has to do with reimbursement for advancing certain funds. Mayor, if you
Sure. I'm going to ask Wyman to come, and he can kind of explain. This is basically a resolution. We try and, we try and project where we may, in moving these projects forward that were approved, we try and project how much money we can spend when. And any money that we spend between tonight, if this resolution passes, and the actual sale of the bonds, then is eligible for reimbursement out of the bonds. Correct, Wyman? Did I?
Correct. We'll have about two months before we have money from the sale of the bonds, and this allows us to go ahead and start those projects and spend some money and get reimbursed out of the bond proceeds when we sell the bonds.
Okay.
Question, Wyman, in regard, since we had two comments before in regard to the animal shelter, which is involved in this resolution, is it, this $300,000, is that for the location at Hunt Park, or is this just for the design in general? Design in general. We plan to hold some public hearings on the location.
Part of the process, part of the process of the design will be to choose a location.
But this does not tie it to Hunt Park?
No. And I've made Mary and Howard both aware of that.
That's why I wanted to make sure that everybody understood.
There may be other locations in Hunt Park. There may be other locations in other parks. And I've expressed to both of them that if there's a better location, we'll all be for it. So.
Mayor, what is the thinking, what are we thinking about on the public hearings on the animal shelter? He just mentioned public hearings.
Right. And that's what I mentioned a while ago. Melissa's going to give us some possible dates at the end here about.
We'll have one, several?
Well, we'll have one, we'll have one at the beginning. As, what we'll need to do is engage the architects and let them do some work, so we have something to show. And then we'll have a public meeting, probably within the next few weeks, and get input from the public meeting, and we'll talk, we'll study things like location and preliminary design. And then we'll move forward from there. That's just the way the process has to work. We have to get, we have to start with something, and we've got to engage the architect to be able to do that. We had a, we had a needs assessment done, and as much work as we felt comfortable paying for before the bond election to get us at least some information. Square footage, probable price per square foot for an animal shelter, those types of things. That's so we could arrive at the price to ask for in the bond issue. And then, and then we did have them looking at that location in JB Hunt Park, but we can have them side-adapt that wherever. They're aware that we've not chosen a location yet, and that's part of the process of what these meetings will be.
Are we going to have public hearings on these other projects, like the city administration building? Will there be public hearings on that?
We've had.
But I understand that.
Yeah, we've had that.
My question is, are we having more, or?
That's up to y'all.
But as of right now, really all we're thinking about is on the animals.
Right now, we're concentrating on those projects that we think we have an opportunity. We need to get design going on the animal shelter.
Right.
We need, there's going to be some street projects that we need to get design going on.
Okay.
And parks. So those are the fire stations. The first one's already designed pretty far along. We don't think we'll actually be spending the money. These are projects that we think we'll be wanting to spend money before the bonds are sold.
Right.
We'll be wanting to spend some money. That's why this resolution is in place. Other questions? Did we get a motion? We didn't?
Resolution pass.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, a second. Pass the resolution. Any other questions or comments? All right. Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans. Reed.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Third resolution reads, a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction manager contract for the animal shelter.
Make a motion. Resolution pass.
Second.
This is, we got a motion, a second. This is to engage Nabholz Construction, get them to work early, working with the architect as the design begins on the shelter. All right?
And again, just to reiterate, this is just for generic planning for the animal shelter, and to help with the contracts when it comes time for construction.
Right. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Denise?
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed. Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
All right. Item 13, Health Sanitation and Property Maintenance Committee reports and recommendations. Chairman Jim Reed. Jim?
This is an ordinance ordering the raising, demolition, and removal of certain residential structures within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at 215 West Maple Avenue and to declare an emergency and for other purposes. This item was tabled from our February 13th council meeting. They had been asked to do some things there to make sure this property was secure, and I think that they, I think we gave them time to get the purchasing done, I think, and that part of what it was.
No, we asked them with the fence. I think we asked them to fence it for safe. I don't believe they could do, weren't sure about the closing.
I'm going to turn it over to Tom.
Yeah, definitely. One of the things that we talked about was a fence, and they have either completed or in the process of putting a fence on it now, and they have been for the last week or so. I did think that we had talked about the closing, because I did pull this up tonight to bring it, and at this time, it still is showing in the parents' names, so it hasn't closed into the new ownership. So.
I think we understood that had to go through the probate judge. He only agreed to the, for the sale of it, but he still hadn't finished his paperwork, so.
We thought there was a good chance it would have closed by tonight, but it hasn't.
Right. As far as we could find on any county records, correct?
And I drove by the property today, and it looks to me like the fence is complete, and they've also done some cleanup there, so they're moving along toward renovation, it looks like to me.
Yeah. I know Kathy had asked for them to clean up some of the trash. There was like trash bags or something.
I think Waste Management was helping out with that, per Councilman Overton's request.
Yeah. They hadn't gotten it out there yet, but they're working on to do the implement weather since we gave them another free ride. The least they could do is get a dumpster out there.
What, remind me about the going forward as far as the selective demolition. What kind of timeframe are we still looking at? Do we know?
Well, all I know right now is that, and with respect to the exchange of hands of property, the, today, consideration was given, a deed was signed, and I think if it wasn't recorded this afternoon, it will be in the morning. In terms of the timeline for the demolition or the restoration, I know that the Hollises have met with an architect, that he came and reviewed it this past week, and he will have kind of an outline in terms of time and cost to them within the week, is what he's reported to us.
Okay.
Final question that I've got real quick is, is, once they start pulling a permit, demo, or building, or whatever, how long do they have then to complete the job?
Well, the way a ordinance works, Mr. Reed, it's they, once they pull a demo permit, they have to get started within 10 days, and they're supposed to be finished within 30. Now, obviously, on larger projects, I have extended more time as long as I see that something is happening. So, but generally, our ordinance is they start within 10, and they're finished within 30.
And what about building, when they start a building permit?
If they get a building permit, they get six months when they pull that building permit. If they give me something in writing, I can extend it up to six months at a time, and I-
And I have done that for other projects when people ask for it ahead of time, you know, so. How do you wanna handle this? How do you wanna move forward?
I feel like they did what we've asked up to this point.
I'd, I'd feel comfortable, uh, doing an additional postponement for, until the next council meeting to-
Let's skip the council.
Okay. For two, for the second council meeting in, in March.
In March.
To see what kinda progress they've, they've made. If they made good faith effort, then we can take another look at it. If they haven't, we can also take a look at the ordinance then. I'd feel comfortable doing that.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
All right.
Second.
All right. Motion to revisit this, the second council in March, March twenty-seventh. Okay, thank you. All right, that's the motion and we have a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay Denise?
Culver?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
All right.
Jim? We got something.
The, uh, the next one was an ordinance, was that-
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Jim, if you, with your, I, I, we should turn this over to Ernest because-
I was gonna say that-
He's presenting this.
Yeah.
That's correct. This did not go to committee.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file a lien for the removal, raising and removal of a structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at nine oh two Powell Street. City council passed an ordinance November twenty-eighth, ordering the raising and removal of the structure at nine oh two Powell. City ended up raising and removing that structure to the tune of six thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars. This is the ordinance that would place the lien on the property to collect those funds.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone need to speak to this property? Okay Denise?
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, so you know I'm not losing my mind in council. Thank you. All right. I'm gonna let Ernest take item fifteen also.
This is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas, at eleven oh six Thelma.
Have a motion and a second to pass the ordinance. We have any other comments or questions? Does anyone in the audience need to speak to this property? All right Denise?
Reed?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Do we have any comments from department heads? Melissa, I know at least one comment you're gonna have.
Hello, I just wanna discuss with you a few potential dates for public meetings, for three separate topics. Number one, animal shelter, to see the layout and discuss possible location. Number two, talk about road projects. And number three, to talk about improvements to Tyson Park. The three dates that we've identified are March twenty-second, April nineteenth, and May seventeenth. And each of these would have a three-week comment period in addition to the meeting. So if people can't make it, they'll still have three weeks to get us their comments.
Are you proposing them in that order, three twenty-two, to be the animal shelter?
That's up to the council. I originally just figured we'd do the animal shelter first. That seems to have the most amount of interest right now. And then do roads and then Tyson Park. But if you guys wanna do them in another order, that's perfectly fine.
What were the last two dates?
Uh, April nineteenth and May seventeenth. And these are all Thursdays. And I'm proposing probably five to seven PM.
Or-
Well, that's one thing that, that the mayor and I were discussing because there may be an opportunity to ho, hold at least two of these meetings at locations that are closer to the locations in question, so possibly having the animal shelter discussion closer to JB Hunt Park and Tyson Park discussion closer to Tyson Park, which may make it a bit easier for the people who live in that area to get to the meeting. So, if you guys settle on these dates, then I will start scouting locations and get something nailed down.
It could kinda work both ways. And I, we'll, we'll do it however y'all wanna do it. Moving it around could hurt, if we just said everything's at city hall, that's, and, and we're set up here and we got our stuff here. But I, I'm not opposed at all to moving it around. If we wanted to have it at, at a school near JB Hunt Park or a, or a school near, the, the roads, I think really should be here, because they're gonna be all over anyway, right? So, um, but we just need to hear from you all how you-
Might be, might be more convenient to have them all here, that way everybody knows where to come every time.
I'm kinda leaning that way too.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we'll, that way everybody knows they don't have to want-
Well, people expect to come here for city meetings and-
Right, I agree.
And what's the time?
Excuse me?
Five to seven PM.
Five, it'd be five to seven PM.
This seems to, Melissa, I know we've got a lot of time in between these. Um, I just, I, I think the animal shelter, March twenty-second's great. Uh, that gives the architects a little time to get something for everybody to look at. The roads, a month later, do we, tell us why we're proposing so much time in between these?
So I spaced them out to, since we're having a three-week comment period, I spaced it out so the projects don't overlap with the previous comment period, so there's no confusion on, um, basically what timeframe is focused on which project. So they're all very, they have very distinct set times.
I just, I'm not sure we wanna wait until May to do the park.
That's fine, we can move that up.
If we compress those and, and those comment periods overlap, do you think that's a-
I don't think it'd be that big of a deal.
Is it-
I just initially thought that might make it a little bit easier, but we can definitely overlap those a bit to move it up a bit faster.
Okay.
Does it matter that that March date is spring break week? Do we care?
Uh, and that's the animal shelter one?
Yep.
Yeah, that is during spring break. Wyman? Uh, our architects for the animal shelter, after tonight, after the approval tonight of the reimbursement resolution, and then now we've, we've got a, a construction manager on board. How early, I mean, what, what do you think would push them to get, get something? I, I don't wanna have a meeting before we've got enough for people to make it productive for people to see.
I think they could make the March meeting.
You think they could make the March twenty-second meeting?
Yeah.
About March fifteenth.
And it'd be, uh, it might be a little bit early to get them organized by that time.
Yeah, that's just a couple of weeks. Maybe, maybe-
Probably the sixth.
What about March twenty-ninth? What if we put it off a week, the twenty-ninth? That gets it out of spring break.
I think it would be down.
That'd be all right.
Okay. We'll do that and then we can continue to look at compressing some of those others if, if we need to move them up.
I think if we give plenty of time to the shelter would be, would be good to have, to not have an overlap with the comment time with the shelter would be good.
Okay.
We'll probably have the contract for the engineer for the park, the second meeting in March, so we'll take a little time after that to have the park meeting.
We're, we're gonna need, uh, yeah, the, the shelter and the, and the park, those are, that's one thing, two things. But the prioritizing of roads is gonna be a huge issue, that we're gonna, would y'all prefer that I give you, I mean, you've got a book with forty projects. Would you, would you prefer? And, and to bring the public in to a public meeting, to, I, I, I just feel like, whether it's my list or yours, we oughta have something to start with.
If we have, if, perhaps we could have Brad come, since he put together the, the booklet, perhaps he could come at one of our committee meetings, give us a, a recap of, and maybe an update on his book to give us a, a little insight. Therefore, we could have a better chance of answering.
That's, that's, I think that's a good plan. Brad and I will work on what, what he and I together believe would be good priorities, a good list. And we'll present that at a committee meeting before we go to a public meeting.
I think that'd be good.
I think that'll be good. Okay.
I don't, I don't think we need to put it off two months though, or whatever it was gonna be.
I don't either.
Yes.
I think if we have to compress those times, I mean, obviously people can comment on whichever, whichever project they wanna comment on and-
The second committee meeting in March, he can give us, if he's ready, he can give us a-
We could do that.
An update.
We could have that ready.
Yes, let's do that.
We've prioritized some of those roads already, haven't we, with somebody?
Well, we, we discussed it at the time, but there's been a lot of changes.
Yeah, and I, you know, I had, I had at least two or three priorities in my mind that I, that I talked about at, at all these public meetings I did about the bond issue, but I made it clear every time that ultimately it's the council that is gonna prioritize these projects. So, uh, I, I think a few of those that you get from me and Brad won't be, won't be surprises. But, uh, but after you get past the first three, four, or five projects, it can start getting a little, there's a lot of, a lot of things to weigh through and see, see how we really do wanna prioritize them.
One might-
And they don't all have to be prioritized on the front end. We'll have to see how bids come in on some, we'll have to, I mean, but, but it, it would be good, I think, to have, if we had ten or twelve projects for that public meeting, for the count, for the public to weigh in on, I think that's better than dropping down forty projects in front of them and, and, you know, uh, I think, I think that we're gonna be a lot more productive. And, uh, but you all need to be involved in that and I think, I think Mike's idea, I think if we just bring it to a committee meeting first, and then, then you all can make any changes you want to, either in priority, or if, if there's a, if there's a project you wanna add as a, as a committee, then, then we can get all that sorted out before we, before we take several projects to the, to a public meeting. Of course, our committee meeting's a public meeting too, so, public certainly has an opportunity to come and weigh in anytime they want, so.
It's probably gonna be another thirty days before we get a good idea of how much money we're gonna actually have for road projects.
But we could still be discussing the projects in general and what we'd like to see as our priority.
Right. Okay, we're gonna move forward then with, uh, with the animal shelter meeting on March twenty-ninth.
Yeah, we'll do that, we can do that animal shelter on March twenty-ninth, and then we can compress the, uh, the road meeting and the Tyson meeting to both be in April.
Right.
And we get that moved up there. And we'll still keep a three-week comment period, so there's plenty of time for people to give.
Right, they'll just over, they'll just overlap.
They'll just overlap and we'll just make it very clear on the website, www.springdalear.gov that, um, the, where the comment period is and where the meetings will be held, so, I'll go ahead and I'll send out information with the, um, final dates and make sure you guys are okay with that, and then I'll get all that information out to everybody.
Good deal.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks Melissa. Uh, any comments from council? City attorney?
Actually, I have two.
All right.
I've given each of you my twenty seventeen, the annual report of the city attorney's office, which I do every year. It's also on the city's website if anyone's interested in looking at that, and if you have any questions, please let me know. And the second thing is my two Springdale Youth Council mentees are here, Courtney and Haley, thank you for coming. I wanted to recognize them for being here.
Great, thanks for being here. What do you think?
Impeaching.
All right, good deal. I know there's a basketball game tonight, so, uh, I actually made this, this may be my shortest State of the City address. That's not an applause line, um, yet, but I, I hope you'll find it helpful. Tonight, it's my privilege to deliver to you the two thousand eighteen State of the City address. This is my tenth such address to you and the people of Springdale since becoming mayor in January of two thousand nine. And if I remember correctly, and I think I do, I think I'll never forget it, city hall was being powered by a generator that night due to the ice storm. As most will remember, two thousand nine was already a very challenging time economically for the people of our city and across the nation. But, a lot of great things have happened in this community both before and since that devastating ice storm. In fact, our city has a long, rich history of people, churches, organizations, and businesses that have made and will continue to make our city, state, and world a better place to live. Tonight, I'll briefly mention some of the highlights from two thousand seventeen, as well as touch on some exciting things we can look forward to this year. We talk a lot about the construction of Arkansas Children's Northwest and the opening of our new Sam's Club. And we should. Those, those are projects for which the people of Springdale are thankful. Children's Northwest will change lives of so many families for the better. With today's opening of North, of Children's Northwest, an already great selection of healthcare options in northwest Arkansas just went to the next level. Sam's Club's opening last year made a noticeable impact on our monthly sales tax revenue. They have set the stage for more retail development in the overlay district, making the most of great anchors such as Arvest Ballpark and now Children's Northwest. There are already plans for another multi-story tower located just to the north of Children's Northwest. To the south, at the southeast corner of Don Tyson Parkway and Gene George Boulevard, plans have been announced for a hundred and eighty million dollar business development. Just west of the ballpark, Northwest Arkansas Community College has announced plans to begin construction on the new Washington County Center sometime this year. Development is also happening outside our overlay district. It's actually happening all over town. Our downtown revitalization continues to pick up the pace. Every week, either I or a member of our staff is in some meeting about proposed development downtown. Our city, thanks to your support, publicly funded many infrastructure product, projects Our city, thanks to your support, publicly funded many infrastructure projects to help support and prepare for the coming development. We know this will have to continue. Springdale Water Utilities, I'm gonna give them a shout out. They have also been a valuable partner as we've worked together to prepare for growth, not only downtown, but all over Springdale. And I'm gonna digress just for a moment, because when I mention Springdale Water Utilities, I've got to mention their help and assistance through the process with our fire department and with our dispatch of, for our fire department being able to acquire a Class 1 ISO rating, one of only eight in the state, and everyone should be feeling that hopefully on their insurance rates. And, and our fire department did great work to achieve that goal and, and, but it couldn't have been done without a great water department and our dispatch center. Back to downtown, the Walton Family Foundation, along with other large and small private investors, continues to support our downtown and believes in this revitalization. And in 2017, Tyson opened a spectacular new office complex on East Emma Avenue, bringing team members to work in our downtown every day. This helps support our existing restaurants and shops while creating the need for more in the future. And they're not finished yet. We can look forward to future announcements regarding the expansion of Tyson's presence downtown. And by the way, it wasn't lost on anyone who attended the opening day of Tyson's office complex here on Emma. When a Tyson executive referred to our future downtown area as Tech Town, I think, I think we're beginning to see how that could really happen, and that's an exciting thing. I want to express my appreciation to some of the anchors that have not only helped sustain our downtown through the years, but are helping lead the charge during its rebirth. The Jones Center, a true jewel for Northwest Arkansas, continues to expand offerings and programming to meet the desires of our residents. With a new mountain bike training facility that will begin soon, they will further enhance our biking infrastructure, continuing the momentum created by the mountain bike trails that are currently being built on and around Fitzgerald Mountain. The Arts Center of the Ozarks, with their new vision and bright future, stands poised to lead our thriving arts community to a new level as our residents support the expanding role of the arts in our community. The Rodeo of the Ozarks, and I'm not just throwing this in for Councilman Culver here, they're a big part of Springdale and they have been for more than 70 years. They continue to be, rodeo continues to be a major event for our region, but through the vision of their board, that facility has become much more than an annual rodeo. Parsons Arena is used for big events almost year-round. We're also blessed to have an asset in our downtown that we often take for granted, but it makes downtown Springdale unique. Our downtown is within walking distance to the second busiest airport in the state. Our Airport Commission is working on plans that would further improve access and connect our airport to our downtown. I've also got to mention our city's own Shallow Museum and Springdale Public Library. They're wonderful assets to our residents, and they're both located within our downtown master plan area. I want to recognize the downtown Springdale Alliance and the Springdale Chamber of Commerce for their spirit of cooperation as they work with each other and our city to set the stage for growth and vitality downtown. What we've seen so far could not have taken place without their passionate leadership and involvement. We have great things happening all over our city. Mercy will soon begin construction of a larger, of a large clinic at Elm Springs Road and I-49. It will be the southernmost facility in their system, and we believe it's just the beginning of an expanded presence in Springdale. We know also that Northwest Health Systems has plans for substantial additional investment in their network, not only in their main location downtown, but in other locations as well. It's encouraging to know that, given the already plentiful options for quality healthcare in our city, the addition of Children's Northwest and the new Mercy Clinic will help position Springdale as the healthcare destination for our region. In southeast, in the southeast part of Springdale, new subdivisions and hundreds of rooftops will continue to be built in the area around CL Charlie and Willie George Park. With a new park and the concentration of schools in the area, we can expect to see more development in the southeast. Northwest Springdale is no different. The new Shaw Family Park near legendary subdivision and Willis Shaw Elementary should start construction this year. On North 40th Street, construction of the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission's Northwest Arkansas Nature and Education Center should be underway soon. And I want to end tonight by addressing our voters and thanking them for their strong support for our bond election that took place just two weeks ago. The voters of Springdale approved all six ballot issues by an average of more than 81%. That's practically unheard of. It's a strong statement that our voters want to see this tremendous momentum and progress continue. We have our work cut out for us, though. As easy as it might, as easy as it might sound, spending more than $160 million on projects within three years will be quite a challenge. That's more than twice the money that was generated with our 2012 bond issue. This council has been full partners with our city administration in preparation for wisely prioritizing projects. Now, through additional public meetings and your input, we'll get to work prioritizing projects in each of the categories approved by voters. No category will be more challenging, as I spoke to earlier, than prioritizing construction of new roads and improvements to existing roads. But exciting days are ahead. With the upcoming construction of a new police and court building, along with renovated City Hall, new and renovated parks, additional fire stations and training facility, and a new animal shelter, Springdale is poised for continued growth. The only reason a city government exists is to return services to its residents. We are public servants. The vote of confidence demonstrated two weeks ago confirms we're on the right track for Springdale, and I'm sure all of you agree that that is a huge responsibility and one that I know none of us take lightly. We are so blessed to be part of such a warm and welcoming community. Springdale is a much different place than it was when I was growing up, but we have seen big changes in our demographics over the past 25 to 30 years, and that's a lot of change in a relatively short period of time. Human nature is to resist change and the unknowns that come with it, and for that reason, I couldn't be prouder of the way Springdale has embraced this change. From our schools, which have been on the front lines, to our churches, to our business community, and down to our individual neighborhoods, Springdale has been a shining example of what a welcoming community looks like. We recognize the richness that is added to our lives when we can willingly expose ourselves to other cultures, right here in our own city, and we've learned that our own culture's not at all threatened when we open up to others. I personally have learned that I don't have to forget who I am and where I come from in order to appreciate who someone else is. Through our work and cooperation with the National Organization of Welcoming Communities, we're working, we're working on specific initiatives we can implement that will, let me turn the page here, that will help our new residents better integrate and access everything Springdale has to offer. I remember moving here with my family as an eight-year-old, and it wasn't long before two ladies were at our doorstep. They were from the welcome wagon. They brought us some small gifts and lots of information that helped us know more about our new community. It meant a lot to our family, and it made a lasting impression on me. Being a welcome, a welcoming community has nothing to do with some of the red meat issues many like to attach it to. The national debate swirling around immigration issues shouldn't impact how we treat our neighbors. I would refer you to the Gospel of Luke, chapter 10, verses 24 through 37, and that's Jesus' parable of the Good Samaritan. That said, make no mistake, the city of Springdale will always, it always has and always will fully cooperate with federal agencies as they do their jobs. But still, we can and should strive for ways to be a welcoming community. Whether our new neighbor comes from around the state or across the ocean, it's simply the right thing to do. This is truly a great city made up of great people. We have a proud past and surely have an exciting future. It is a privilege to serve our residents with this council, our boards and commissions, countless volunteers, and city employees who do their work with outstanding commitment to their jobs and the ability to do those jobs with excellence. I am blessed. We are blessed. Thank you to my family that unconditionally loves and encourages and supports me, and thanks be to God, who sustains and empowers each of us to fulfill His unique purpose in each of our lives. Thank you, God bless you, and good night. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. We're adjourned, thank you. Y'all have a great evening.